This time I'll call the Haywood County Board of Education's November meeting to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in for our board prayer. Board members, please rise for the board prayer, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious Father, we want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here. We want to thank you, Lord, for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we thank you for the wisdom and guidance that you help transpire through us, to help guide and direct and make regulations and decisions that affect the children of Haywood County in their education. Lord, we pray that you continually guide us and direct us. We can make the best decisions to help give these children the best education possible and let them be the future leaders of our country. And Lord, we also pray for your guidance over our country. Help us be at peace. Help us, Lord, to always remember that you are in control and you're in command. And we need to always keep that on the forefronts of our minds as we walk through our lives daily. And Lord, a lot of turmoil and a lot of sickness, Lord, we pray that you help keep us all safe and healthy and help those that are sick to be healed. And Lord, thank you for all that you do for us, and we'll always give you the praise and glory for it all. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Our prayers with Jesus, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seen. I'd like to remind everyone that we have our next regular board meeting here at the Education Center on Monday, December fourteenth at seven o'clock. And other than that, what I'd like to say is congratulations to those that have been reelected. We will have a swearing in ceremony at the next board meeting, and I look forward to as well serving another four years on the Board of Education.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to those at Mr. Clark, Mr. Burnett, and Mr. Francis for their reelection, and we will welcome Logan Nesbit as our next board member. We're going to recognize Anne in just a few minutes.
Just want to say thank you to everybody that was, you know, supported us and how grateful we are to be back serving the Haywood County again.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Are there any agenda adjustments tonight?
Yes, sir. I have items I need to bring before the board for information only.
Information only? Do you want to do it? We'll do it between twenty-two and twenty-three, if that's okay, item number, between Brown Avenue Project and the personnel.
That'd be fine, Mr. Chairman.
The engine. Any other items that need to be brought before the board or agenda adjustments? Okay. This time we entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Mr. Rogers made the motion, said with Dr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Also failed to mention that Mr. Kirkpatrick had a previous engagement that he needed to go. He was here earlier this evening, but he had to leave, and so that's where Mr. Kirkpatrick is. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Ginny Wood, and I think she's coming to us remotely.
Good evening, Chairman, France, and members of the board. I want to recognize our special Teacher Assistant of the Year, and I'm pleased to be able to recognize this group of employees this year because in the last year, they've gone above and beyond to accommodate the needs of not only our youngest students, but working in the cafeteria, checking temperatures, whatever has been needed. This group of employees has done and said that. And so I'm excited to be able to recognize them. From Bethel Elementary, our Teacher Assistant of the Year is Denise Passwaters. From Clyde Elementary, Kelly Coleman. From Hazelwood Elementary, Lisa Fisher. From Jonathan Valley, Linda Rathbone. From Junealuska, Rhonda Hambrick. From Meadowbrook, Brittany Caldwell. And from North Canton, Peyton Willis. I'm excited and pleased to recognize them, and we will be sending them their gift and certificate in to each school site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood, and congratulations to all the ones that you've recognized. And they do work very hard, and I appreciate that you've, we've recognized those individuals. Thank you. Next, we have some special recognition. Dr. Nolte, would you please join me up front here? Ms. Barrett, on behalf of the board, we want to recognize you for your dedication and service to this Board of Education. You've participated, you've come to our meetings, you've gone to the state organization meetings with us, and we've enjoyed having you on the board. And we just wanted to recognize you with this plaque, presented to Anne Barrett in appreciation for your dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to Haywood County Schools from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. Now, I do know that you had a term earlier, and you came back to the board, which speaks volumes to your lack of character judgment. No, I'm just kidding. But we really enjoyed having you on the board, and Anne, you've been a valuable member to this board, and you've supported this board with your time, talent, and I just appreciate what you've done, and this is a token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like. I would, I would just like to say that I tell people when they say, "You're the only woman on the board," and I said, "Yeah, but I got a bunch of guys that take really good care of me." And y'all have, and I appreciate it. When we go to meetings, you make sure I'm where I'm at, when I'm supposed to be. If I'm not there, you call in my phone saying what's going on. I'm going to miss you guys, and I will, I'm going to come back and visit, but I just appreciate everything y'all have done, everything you do, Dr. Nolte, and your staff and everything. Brooke, you've been a lifesaver, and I'm going to miss every one of you. Thank y'all.
I'm going to miss you, Ms. Anne, too, as well. A lot of good fun times and a lot of good conferences and.
It's the one thing I think I miss about conferences.
All that great experiences and memories that we'll never forget, so thank you so much. And especially your dedication to these kids and.
Thank you.
You see children and everything, and I know that's your heart, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure serving with you.
Yes. Next on our agenda is Dr. Putnam with annual report on concussions and head injuries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The irony of me reporting on head injuries, I've had a few myself. Superintendent's annual report to the board on compliance with laws and policies related to student wellness shall include a report on the system's compliance with laws and policies related to concussions and head injuries. All school athletic directors were reminded of the requirement of the concussion sheet that all athletes, parent, guardians, school employees, volunteers, or first responders must complete pertaining to concussion before they are allowed to participate in interscholastic athletic activities found in Section B. I've also encouraged ADs to have a preseason parent meeting to take care of these items in a timely manner. Concussion education video or high school, for high school student athletes, per North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules, all high school student athletes and parents of high school student athletes must view the crash course concussion education video prior to each sport season. Section C, school head injury information sheet. Each year, all coaches, school nurses, athletic directors, first responders, volunteers, student athletes, and parents of student athletes must be provided with a concussion and head injury information sheet that meets the requirements of the State Board. Before any student, school employee, volunteer, or first responder will be allowed to participate in interscholastic athletic activities, including tryouts, practices, or competitions. He or she must sign the head injury information sheet and return it to the coach. Parents also must sign the sheet and return it to the coach before their children may participate in any interscholastic athletic activity. The principal of each school shall ensure that a complete and accurate record of the returned signed sheets is maintained in accordance with law and State Board policy. This policy was updated and approved by the board on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty. The addition in Section B requires student, athletes, and their parents to view the crash course concussion education video prior to each sport season in accordance with the new North Carolina High School Athletic Association rule. We notified all ADs and secondary principals of this change, along with the link for the video, on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Athletic directors were reminded to have emergency action plans for each venue-specific location on their campus that must include the requirements in Section E. All EAPs or emergency action plans for the two thousand twenty-one school year have been submitted. Emergency action plans. Each principal or designee shall develop a venue-specific emergency action plan to respond to serious medical injuries and acute medical conditions in which the condition of the injured student may deteriorate rapidly. All such plans must include a delineation of roles, methods of communication, available emergency equipment, and a plan for emergency transport. The plans must be in writing, reviewed by an athletic trainer who is licensed in North Carolina, and approved by the principal if developed by a designee, distributed, posted, reviewed, and rehearsed in accordance with General Statute one fifteen C dash twelve, Section twenty-three and five. Athletic directors do a good job of keeping up with all necessary paperwork pertaining to athletics, including but not limited to yearly school physicals, consent to treat, and concussion sheets. We are continuing to use Family ID that allows all of this information to be stored and entered by either the athletic director or the athlete's parent or guardian. Once a student is entered, their information will follow them from middle school through high school. Another convenient feature is once the information is loaded, parents will be able to log in and print copies of their child's physical. The program alerts the AD and parent or guardian when a physical will expire. That falls under Section G, record keeping. So these are all of the things we have in place for concussions and head injuries, and per General Statute, we have complied with all rules and regulations regarding concussions and head injuries. This is in your policy forty-two seventy slash sixty-one forty-five. Does anyone have any questions for me? This is our annual report on concussions and head injuries.
Any questions for Dr. Putnam? Thank you for the updating the report, and I think you're next on the agenda as well.
Again.
Yes, sir.
So next is the superintendent's report on random student drug testing. Our first drug test was September of two thousand nineteen. The cost was seventeen hundred and thirty-five dollars. And we had zero percent of testing positive at Haywood Early College and Pisgah High School, and we had three point two percent of students tested, testing positive at Tuscola High School, and fifty percent of those that were tested at Central Haywood High School. And I probably should back up to remind, random drug testing hinges on extracurricular activities and parking privileges, so that's the random poll that is used for random drug testing. Our second drug test was November of two thousand nineteen at a cost of fifteen hundred and eighty dollars. And on our second drug test, round of drug testing on November two thousand nineteen, zero percent of Central Haywood High School tested positive. Haywood Early College, zero percent tested positive. Pisgah High School had a ten point seven percent of positives, and Tuscola High School had a fourteen point eight percent of positives. Our third drug test was March of two thousand twenty, just before COVID hit. That was on, in March. The cost of that drug testing was one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. Central Haywood had zero percent of their students test positive. Haywood Early College had zero percent of their students test positive. Pisgah High School had zero percent of their students test positive. And Tuscola High School had three point eight percent of their students test positive. And again, that's not of all students, that's of the random poll. The fourth drug test that was scheduled for May had to be canceled due to COVID and health-related concerns around that. The totals for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the cost was five thousand seventy-nine dollars. The overall totals for Central Haywood High School, twenty-five percent of the random pool was positive. At Haywood Early College, zero percent of the random pool was positive. At Pisgah High School, three point four nine percent of those tested were positive. And at Tuscola High School, of those tested, six point nine eight percent were positive. Bringing the overall total for the system, five point five nine percent of all students tested from this random pool being positive. Any questions in regards to random drug testing for our students?
Now, if a child tests positive, don't they have to retest the next time it comes up? Or is that, that's mandatory that that child is one of the, in the pool of the next test, correct?
You are correct. So if, if at any time a student tests positive, it's no longer random for that student. They are automatically entered into the pool the second time. Any other questions or comments regards to random drug testing for students?
Assuming we join, get back to halfway normal, we'll go back to the drug test and once we get back full-time for everybody.
Yes, sir.
And it's clear to do it safely, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you.
Now is the time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. We have had one individual sign up tonight to address the board, and let me make sure I get this right, Mr. Douglas Knight, is that correct? You may approach the podium, sir.
First of all, let me apologize for not wearing a mask. I have respiratory problems and I hate to infect anybody, but I know I'm not infected. What I want to talk to the board about, something that came up actually in Buncombe County last week. It happened at Irwin High School, and I want to see if we can't get ahead of this before it gets into our school. And what it is, is there was a, a math teacher and a science teacher that had a curriculum that they wanted the kids to fill out, and it was a ten-page. And the first question on it was, should people with disability be allowed to reproduce? Goes on, it says, uh, "Is it natural for children to keep secrets from the parents?" Sex outside marriage is usually immoral. And they're asking this of kids. And, you know, I don't think that needs to be brought up in our schools. And I'm sure Haywood County is one of the schools that I don't see it happening in. But I just wanted Haywood County Schools to be aware of this. I mean, some of y'all know me by sight, some of you know me as who I am. And, but I don't fuss much unless it's something really important, and this is important. I've got grandkids in Haywood County Schools, I went to Haywood County Schools, and, and I think that this should be addressed. So I'd like to thank the board and everyone here for allowing me to get up here and speak tonight. And like I say, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Knight. Anyone else sign up to address the board, Ms. Barrett? Thank you. Board members, you had an opportunity to look at the October eighth and twelfth closed session minutes, as well as October twelfth open session minutes. We need a motion to approve.
Make a motion we approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Barrett to approve the minutes as presented. Do I hear a second? Mr. Clark, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Dr. Nolte about our parent advisory council.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests. Brooke is going to scroll through the names of the parent advisory council individuals who have been recommended by their schools. Parent advisory councils are a legislative requirement in North Carolina. In some schools, these people actually serve in multiple roles, not just only parent advisory, but they work with booster clubs or they work as a PTA or PTO officer. So at this time, I bring to you for your consideration for annual approval, the members, recommended members of the parent advisory council for the school year.
Do I hear a motion? We approve the presentation.
Oh, move.
Dr. Rogers made a motion to approve the list of parent advisory council members. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hey, Mr. Francis, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Just have one comment. I just appreciate folks that are willing to work with our schools and be serving this capacity. It takes some time, and to put your name on a list and show up for the meetings, I say thank you.
Yes, I agree. Especially right now.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Think I have the next couple of items on the agenda, if that would be good.
Yes, sir, and we'll vote real quick.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, if there's no other discussion or comments. There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, got to have myself.
It's all right.
We have discussed in previous sessions, making sure that we don't miss anything in our finance department with our fin, finance director out on, for medical reasons, the reports on her are very good. Been talking back and forth with the family, and we decided to bring in Kathy Eisenhower a couple days a month just to check behind us so we don't miss anything big. And we bring to you at this time the agreement that we have with them. I did email this earlier to our attorney, Pat Smathers, and Kathy's probably already saved us enough money to pay her. This was some suggestions that Leanna would have known that maybe the rest of us didn't.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Herd Eisenhauer Loops agreement for the school system.
We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Henson, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board. The next item is the annual approval of student fees. We discussed those at our work session on Thursday. We do have benefactor paying for many of the elementary fees and COVID. We appreciate that very, very much. We talked to our schools about not increasing those fees and shared those with you on Thursday. At this time, we ask your approval for the list of student fees.
Do I hear a motion? Mr. Clark's made a motion, do you want?
Second.
Ms. Barrett's going to second it? Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Next, we have Mr. Shepherd here. He had a long list of stuff that he's going to get us to do tonight.
So we just want to present the standard hours for the bus routes. So basically, these, these numbers are not necessarily tied to a person. They're, they're mostly tied to a bus route, not even a bus number, as we interchange buses on routes, you know, to get mileage maxed out where we need to on the buses. But per each route, we have standardized the time as best as you can call anything standardized this, this year. And basically, we've taken the AM and the PM route times based on Senovia, which is our GPS software, and added in ten minutes for a free trip inspection, ten minutes for cleanup at the end, for a total of twenty extra minutes on that. Some discussion goes on with us and payroll is actually, you know, are, are the people clocking a lot more than this time, a lot less than this time? And a discussion with the principals, have you approved for this person on this particular route to be cleaning buses, moving buses, or anything else that, you know, that we count in the transportation department? But based on that, these are the standard times for the routes for this year.
We need a motion to approve these.
Oh, move.
Mr. Burnett's made a motion to approve the standard hours on the bus routes. Second with Mr. Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Now we have, I think Ms. Stevenson is going to join us remotely. So Ms. Stevenson, you're on.
Hi, Chairman Francis, members of the board, staff and guests. If I could, I'd like to first say thank you to Ms. Barrett for always being supportive of our friends with disabilities, and thank you for the time you've spent serving on the board. Okay, tonight I bring to you two contracts. First is an amendment to a contract for a public consulting group to add translation of forms. It's an extra fee that we can pay to have all of our IEP forms that go to parents in their native language. So it will, they can translate all of the forms in up to ninety languages. If you could approve that one, that would be great.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion, do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second with Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is this a standardized fee, or do they just do it by what they do, or?
It will be a yearly fee, and it's based on the number of students that we have in the exceptional children's program, which is about twelve hundred.
I think you answered his questions, he's nodding his head up and down. Yep, thumbs up.
Is, is the, is it a three-year contract or is it a year-to-year contract? And we just have a three-year agreement? Is, is the con- is it a three-year contract or is it a year-to-year contract? And we just have a, a three-year agreement?
It's a three-year agreement, but there's a yearly fee every year.
Okay.
It's a fixed fee for three years.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think you've got another item, Ms. Stevenson.
Yeah, the next agreement is with Mountain Projects and it is for our EC pre-case staff to serve the children ages three and up at their childcare facilities.
I hear. Ms. Barrett's made the motion to approve this contract agreement?
Second.
Take my Dr. Rogers, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. And again, with that second, um, agreement, that, there's no money attached to that. That's just for us to provide services in their childcare facilities.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Next, we have a contract from Mr. Hines' department here. I think we talked about this earlier as well.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, for your consideration is the contract for the employee assistance program that we talked about in the work session. Um, again, this is a, a company that provides, uh, counseling, training, and assistance for employees, uh, for a multitude of issues. And we have, uh, if you'll indulge us, uh, Dr. Nolte and I would like to, uh, let you see the introductory video that will go out to our employees tomorrow if you approve this contract. Uh, it's about six minutes. I'll, I'll come back. Thank you.
That'll be fun.
As educators, we know that life is about challenges and opportunities. That's what we equip our students to face in life. But sometimes the challenges that we face in our own lives can become difficult or serious enough to cause disruption at home or on the job. As teachers, we're focused on putting our students first, but we need to know when to take care of ourselves. That's where your Educators Employee Assistance Program, or EAP for short, comes in. Your EAP is a free confidential benefit offered by your employer to help you and your family find resources to resolve problems and improve your quality of life. There are two easy ways to tap into your EAP benefits. Dial your twenty-four-hour-a-day toll-free number or log into your online help center or your mobile app. When you phone in, a professional counselor answers your call. Every EAP counselor has a master's or PhD degree and many years counseling experience. Start by talking about your issues. You and your counselor may decide that telephone counseling is the best option. About half of all issues are resolved in one or two phone sessions. But if more help is needed, local professional counselors are available for appointments. If so, your EAP will continue managing your case to ensure your issues are successfully treated. And this is important, everything you discuss with the EAP is totally confidential. No problem is too big or too small. Counseling covers a wide range of issues, including stress, anxiety, depression, grief, and other emotional problems. Or you may be grappling with substance abuse or a particularly difficult life decision. Counseling also covers family and parenting issues. Everything from special needs children and adoption to eating disorders and divorce. If you're a caregiver for elderly parents, we can assist in finding elder care resources and support. If you're overwhelmed by money problems, debt counseling is available. And your EAP provides one free legal evaluation with an attorney per legal issue in any area, except those involving your employer or medical malpractice. The second way to access your EAP benefits is to log into your EAP website or app. This is great for times when you simply need trustworthy information to make a good decision or solve everyday issues like finding good daycare providers, finding pet care, or sourcing convenient auto services. There are over twenty-five thousand self-help resources covering subjects ranging from alcohol abuse and depression to personal finance, career planning, and legal questions. There's also an entire library of health information assessments and thousands of articles and videos covering everything from allergies to women's health, along with an entire online wellness center. You'll also want to explore the lifestyle savings benefits to find savings discounts on thousands of products and services that you purchase every day. Most people think that the EAP is there only for problems, but your EAP benefit is different. Yours is the only EAP to offer you a whole menu of opportunities to improve your life at home and at work. Personal and professional development is a major part of your employee assistance benefit. Your EAP includes telephonic coaching programs from certified coaches designed to help you grow and master life skills. These range from certified financial coaching, home purchasing, workplace conflict, resilience, communication skills, supervisory skills, and more. Certified coaching would cost a fortune if contracted privately, but professional coaching is a no-cost benefit with your EAP. In addition, you have access to thousands of online training programs to help develop your skills at work and improve your life at home. These courses can help you grow. Start exploring the vast array of free resources and benefits online by clicking on employee and family login at www.educatorsEAP.com. If it's your first time, follow instructions to register. You only need to do that once. If you need help, call us. And if you don't have computer access, simply call your EAP and a counselor will do the research for you. So who's covered by your EAP benefit? As an employee, you are covered, plus any of your household members, as well as dependent children living away from home up to age twenty-six. Be sure to share these benefits with them. Remember, first and most important, all counseling records are confidential, except when required by law to disclose. Next, there are two ways to access your benefits or get help. Reach out to us by phone or log into your online center or mobile app. The best time to call is between eight AM and nine PM weekdays. But you may call anytime, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And remember, there are thousands of resources available at your fingertips anytime by logging into your EAP help center. We hope everything goes well in your life, but if there's a time that you can use help in coping with life's troubles, solving day-to-day problems, or deciding to take steps to improve your life, be assured, your EAP is here for you. Remember to call the EAP at eight hundred two five two four five five five. And to access the EAP online benefits, log on to www.educatorsEAP.com.
Thank you for letting us, uh, give you that preview. Um, this is a three-year agreement, uh, three-year contract with, um, a set price per employee. So each year we would submit the number of employees that we have at that given time, which, uh, this year it was in October. And they will bill us accordingly. Uh, it has been approved by our fine court attorney. I sent it to him and he, he's nodding yes, so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is this for just full-time employees or is this going to be for part-time as well or?
It's for full-time, part-time, permanent employees. Uh, temporary employees would not have access. But they have assured us that if someone calls on behalf of Haywood County Schools, they will not turn them away, so. Uh, you know, there shouldn't be a mistake on someone's employment status. They, they will, uh, provide the service for anyone that calls and says they're associated with us.
This is a new program that we're just.
This is new for Haywood County Schools. Uh, other districts have done this in the past and are currently doing it. Uh, but this is the first time for Haywood County Schools, yes.
Do, will they or do they at the end of the year give us a summary of how many calls was received or uh, do we get a report, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yes, uh.
Well, if it's beneficial.
Yes, sir. A- as the HR director, I will receive a report once a month uh, that will tell us the number of employees. It won't give us any names or anything. It is confidential. But it will tell us the number of employees who have accessed the different services and it breaks it down, uh, in nine categories, I think.
Can you share that with us? Maybe not every month, but maybe at the end of the year. Just curiosity, I'd like to know.
Absolutely.
You know, who's, how many are using it?
Sure.
I would think that that'd be something we'd have to cover in closed sessions, just to protect the numbers in my.
Yeah.
But we'll, if it needs to be public, we'll, but I just feel like it should be confidential.
Yeah, uh, whatever the board wishes, I'll be happy to do.
We'll, we'll get legal advice on that.
Okay.
It is confidential and I think that we want to make sure that people understand that the integrity of the whole thing is to keep it confidential because there'll be some hesitancy if there's any inkling that it's gonna be looked at.
Yeah, and again, they, they will not give us any names. They will not give us any, uh, other than just numbers of employees who access each category. It doesn't really even tell you the issue inside the category, so.
Very good.
Mr. Hines, I'd like to say, um, thank you for the hard work on this. I do think it's something that's very beneficial to the employees. I know that when you started out down this road, uh, you didn't know what we were gonna face in the past few months, but, uh, it's coming at a very good time and I, I appreciate your hard work and your effort on it. And with that, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
All right, we got a motion from Dr. Rogers. Do I hear?
I'd like to second.
Take it, Mr. Burnett. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
I'd like to make another comment now, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do, again, I'm, I'm like Dr. Rogers, I appreciate you, Mr. Hines, and, uh, what we're doing with this and again, I think this is trying to, please let our employees know. It's another one of these things that we're trying to make sure our employees are taken care of. Uh, I like this idea about, you know, also household members, spouses, other people have access to this, up to so many members per household and that's, that's another thing that you're not gonna find if you had outside counseling sources somewhere, you're paying for it yourself and, uh, this is just something else that we want to say thank you to our employees and it's another one of these, one of these things that we're help them out too and help it make their life a little easier on them, especially during these COVID and tough times that we're going through right this time, so.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right, any more questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. I think our employees have won a nice benefit tonight. Next, we have Dr. Putnam with our first reading of three policies.
Just to get you warmed up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have, uh, three policies, uh, for first reading. Um, I'll give you the highlights of those. First is policy forty-three, forty-five, student discipline records. It basically adds a section B that reads, the student either graduates from high school or is not suspended or expelled again during the two-year period commencing on the date of the student's return to allow, or to school after the expulsion or suspension. So basically, this is an additional provision of when, uh, student discipline records can be, uh, done away with or disposed of. So that's the big change in forty-three, forty-five. Next, we have, uh, forty-one, twenty, domicile or residence requirements. Um, this is centering around a new federal law that went into effect December twentieth, two thousand nineteen that requires LEAs to permit the participation of home school, homeschool students as well as, uh, s- some students that we may be or may host the nearest JROTC program. So those provisions, uh, by a new federal law, if we were the nearest JROTC program or if a homeschool student wanted to participate, this would allow them to participate in that, in that program. Again, that, that is a new federal law. So that's for policy forty-one, twenty. And last, but certainly not least, um, is thirty-six, twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. Uh, we did not accept the cu- the, uh, policy as was. We made the following custom modification uh, in council, uh, with Campbell and Shetley. Um, basically, the policy, uh, hinged around without boring you to death with the entire policy, it hinged around student-led groups, uh, student-initiated groups, uh, which have been around in Haywood County, uh, for many years now. But they added language that said, non-school members could not participate. And as we all know, that is not our practice in Haywood County. We have a lot of volunteers that help us in a lot of different ways in a variety of clubs. Um, so the new language that was provided to us from, uh, Campbell and Shetley uh, reads more like this. Non-school persons may attend, to supervise, and assist the activities of these groups. However, the group should remain student-initiated and student-led and non-school persons should not initiate, direct, conduct, or control the activities of the group. Although non-school persons assisting, uh, these groups are not official school volunteers, they should receive a background screening pursuant to policy fifty, twenty. So with that language change, it makes the provision for non-school members to partici- uh, to participate and even supervise uh, these clubs. Um, but as is the case for all student clubs, they need to be initiated by students, um, which is in holding with what we've done in Haywood County for many years.
Okay.
Any questions on those, uh, three policies?
Again, those three policies will be tabled for thirty days for public input and will take action in December.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Ronnie Clark, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Uh, Mr. Francis, uh, the board, the Finance Committee made earlier and reviewed all the monthly finance, uh, from all the schools. Everything looks good. And I bring it for a motion to be approved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Clark. Do I hear a second? Take it, Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Francis, I just want to make a note, the auditors were here in October and they will be reviewing everything in December to the board.
Okay.
Coming to the board.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clark, and the hard work of the Finance Committee. Next, we have Mr. Putnam and then we have, don't even forget the building the grounds piece.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, a request, uh, from the Waynesville town manager, Robert Heights. Uh, he sent a letter to myself dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty. The letter stated the town of Waynesville is not in a financial position to, uh, fund the remaining two-point-five million of the Brown Avenue project. If you'll remember sometime back, this has actually been, uh, passed around for at least ten years. I know it was the entirety of my tenure at, uh, Waynesville Middle. Um, and so that, this is in regards to that particular Brown Avenue project. Uh, the school board, uh, was an original financial partner on the project with a ten percent match. The town has asked, uh, for notice on whether to proceed since the school board was an original partner. Dr. Nolte and myself have reviewed the request, discussed the matter with the board, uh, at the November fifth, twenty twenty boardwork session, and made the following conclusions and rec- recommendations to all of you. Conclusions, number one, we understand the town not currently being in a financial position to fund the remainder of the project. Conclusion, number two, the original project called for the town to pay for twenty percent of the project with the school system paying one-half of that amount or ten percent of, uh, the overall costs. Uh, conclusion, number three, in two thousand fifteen, the state planning organization, or the MPO, committed five hundred and fifty thousand, which was projected to be approximately eighty percent, uh, of the project cost. Conclusion, number four, the project has increased over three million since two thousand fifteen and the MPO can only provide the original amount of five hundred and fifty thousand. Like the town of Waynesville, the school system is not currently in a financial. Like the town of Waynesville, the school system is not currently in a financial position to fund the remainder of the project. Recommendations, number one, the administration recommends not to proceed with the project at this time. And recommendation number two, the administration recommends revisiting the project if new funding becomes available in the future from the MPO or some other third-party source. Happy to entertain questions or comments.
Let's get a motion on it.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approved the recommendations made by our central office staff that we discontinue proceeding with this project at this time.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Dr. Rogers. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I know like Dr. Putnam said, yeah, I hope since he's at Waynesville Middle, I think I met with you several times. We looked at maps, you looked at this, you looked at that. Department of Transportation that time in North Carolina said, yeah, the projects be, you know, like you say, eight-hundred thousand, something like that, and now all of a sudden it's three-point-some million dollars. It's just skyrocketed as well as everything else has in all these uncertain times. Yes, it's a, it's a, it's been a long-term project talked about, and would be great to see it proceeded, but I'm totally in agreement with the town of Waynesville, with their administration as well. I just, it's tough times to have to present that, but we've been without it for a long time, and we will survive. We will be able to make it. And we, we've got some good staff there and crossing the street to the buses and everything with, during the COVID. At least that's been diminished a little bit, but one day hopefully we'll be back to normal. And like Dr. Putnam said, we may find some funds one of these days, and things hopefully will turn to some time of normalcy, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we vote? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr.
Please inform the town of Waynesville formally by the board, please, and let them know of our decision tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, we have building and grounds.
Mr. Chairman, building and grounds, I'd just like to make the full board aware of a, a change in the procedures going forth on the turf replacement projects at Sea Weatherby Stadium and at Pisgah Stadium. The, after looking at the fields and they were laid out, there's two sections, a fence line and curbing, that needs to be adjusted, all of which falls within that one-point-three million dollars that we pulled down to pay for the project. Everything is already funded. We don't have to ask for any more money. But since this is something of, of significant expenditure by the board, we want to keep everybody fully informed.
Okay.
One of those areas was fencing down the visitor side, and then the fencing on the E, or on the scoreboard end of Sea Weatherby. Also adjustments are being made on the cheerleading platforms at both Pisgah and Tuscula.
Okay.
And a handicap route.
And a handicap route.
And a handicap. It still falls within the original amount?
It falls within the original amount of one-point-three million dollars that we had pulled down.
Okay. Thanks for keeping us informed, and anything else from building and grounds?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Dr. Nolte with our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, at this time I bring to you the Personnel Request that we have previously discussed in closed session for your information. We have seventeen separation from employment, four employee status changes, and eight leave of absence for your approval. We have fourteen employments, sixty employee status changes, one leave of absence for substitute teachers, three employee coaches, two non-employee coaches, three volunteer coaches, and the bus route standardization hours that you approved earlier. This is how it reflects for each driver.
Okay. This time we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Ms. Barrett, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Nolte. He and I am, we're going to miss you. Thanks for all your years of service on this board.
Well, I thank y'all for watching out for me when we go to meetings and, and all of that. And I, I, it's been an honor for me to serve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say for this year, we did have our annual conference for the North Carolina School Board Association, and it was for the first time in ever, it's virtual, and I believe Mr. Jim Francis and you, Mr. Chairman, myself, and Dr. Rogers. It was, it was a pretty good conference. I mean, they did a fantastic job of putting it all together, and got a lot to learn, and also we had a lot of extra breakout sessions that we usually don't get to attend. We used to figure out who's going to which one, and this time we get to virtually see all of them, so. It was, and Mr. Henson, you were there a little bit, I guess, too, as well, so. Horse, you was on the horse watching the virtual online meetings. But anyway, no, it was real good, and I just want to say thanks for our system letting us, allow us to, to be a part of these offers, training sessions, so.
Learned a lot of stuff. A lot of people were attending. I was really, really surprised. The numbers that I saw, we'll get a final number on it, but it was, looked like a lot of folks were online. Anything else? There being nothing else, meeting adjourned.